Tom.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Marvin Planning Board to order at 6:30.
Yep.
Yeah, still 6:30 PM on October 19th. We show that we have a full quorum here. I appreciate everybody being here, including the two ladies sitting here across from me tonight. Anyway, has everybody reviewed the agenda? Any comments, questions, additions, deletions?
No comments, questions?
All right, that's the only... The rest of it is crickets. Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
Submit.
Kelly, all in favor?
Who's the second?
Oh, need a second. Excuse me.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Rich. Rich, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh...
I agree with this.
Everybody's going to have to.
I'm aye.
Okay, I think we've got it.
You got it.
All right.
Michael, aye.
Thank you.
It's my speaker.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda, adoption of the minutes for 9/21. Twenty-one. Nine tw- yeah, 21/21. Everybody's got your packet, Austin? Have you read those? Any changes, additions, deletions?
None.
This is Michael. The only thing I have, I saw where it says, "Michael left the meeting unexcused." I texted John and off, and I'm letting you know I was going to go. I said, "Well, that's still unexcused." But just want to let you know that I was, I let you guys know that I was leaving that meeting.
The only way it counts is excused is if the board votes on it, so it's unexcused in the record.
And you had gone already before Austin poked me and said that. I apologize, Michael.
It's not that big of a deal. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I did let you know. I didn't know the board had to vote on it, so if that happens again, I'll let you know.
Well, I didn't either. I keep learning.
Okay. We're good.
I move to adopt the minutes.
Melinda, move to adopt?
Second.
Second?
I'll second.
Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm aye.
Yeah.
Michael, aye.
Yep. Yeah, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, motion passes. Public comment. There's no one here. Is anybody online that wants?
I think the only ones yet online are applicants. Is that correct?
Should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll get to that later. Have you received anything, Austin?
Nope.
All right, so no public comments. Move, close that item. Moving on to the items of discussion. Discussion, consideration, adoption of the 2022 Planning Board meeting schedule.
Okay, so standard, it's the third, still the same, third, third Tuesday every week. I picked to March 1st as your joint meeting with council. Council was fine with that date. It's the first Tuesday of the month. I asked you all in an previous email if moving to 6:00 PM was okay. The council was agreed to do that to alleviate time staff needs to spend in the office. Is that okay with everyone? I only heard back from roughly half of you all.
Fine.
Good.
We will be happy to make the vote.
All right, I've got a question. The June meeting is on, I think, the 14th, which it happens to be a second Tuesday.
Did I do that? Let me look.
Did I do that?
Did I do that? Oh, I might have messed that up. Yes, I messed that up. That is a good catch, John.
Okay.
So I will change that to the 21st. Let me just make sure I didn't mess up again. That one's great, okay. It's a good catch there. So if that's the only, if that's the only thing, then you just need a motion to adopt as amended.
I will move to adopt as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
Rich, all in favor?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I'll send you guys calendar invites for these dates. Soon-ish, that's my list.
You've got until January 8th, you know, beginning of January.
All right.
Do we, I guess we can't move them to 6 o'clock, the remaining ones.
You could, you can do that.
I mean, I know that's especially hard right now for our planner because he doesn't live here.
That's normal, good.
At the moment.
I still get more, I get a lot done in the extra time anyway, so.
Do you all want to move the rest of the meetings for the year, which is, you have two?
It's, I mean, I think, I would personally like to hear from you guys. If it really is difficult, if it would make a big difference for you guys from here until the end, I think we pose it to the rest of the board and see if everyone can make that shift. And if they can't, it's okay, and we'll just start in January. But if everyone is willing to make the shift sooner, then...
I'm probably the most flexible person on the board.
Down for the cause.
I don't, I don't have any issues. Six or 6:30 is not a problem for me.
Any other comment? That we're talking about, that would be the November?
Flexible, no problem.
It'd be November and December, and if there's any special meetings or anything like that.
Ken, how about you?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, yeah, that's, it's fine. It's not going to make a difference for me. My issues are going to be, once we start attending in person, I work downtown on Tuesdays, so that'll, that'll be my challenge. But that's just based on my schedule.
I'm not one of them, but... Kent?
How? Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to reboot my computer. What was the question? To 6 o'clock, is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, fine, my bad.
A motion?
So, can I suggest a motion?
We have to have two motions, one for the 2022.
You already, that's already about it.
That one's done, all right, so, so we need another motion. Oh, can we?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda.
It's still the, it's still your schedule. I would say, I would say it's still pertinent if you will agree with me as the parliamentarian.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
You're the one that keeps us.
Um, so... So a motion to amend the 2021 meeting schedule to shift meetings to, from 6:30 to 6:00 PM.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. All right, all in favor? All right.
Aye. Aye, sure.
Okay.
Really fast, who was it that made the motion second?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
I had you second, Chris.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, Hunter's the one that, well, thank us, I guess.
I said it, yeah.
Just him.
Yeah, works for me.
Okay.
So I will take care of that, too, and...
Okay. Next item on the agenda, review of the final plat for the Gates at Marvin Rural Subdivision. Hunter?
All right, so let me get this up here for everybody. All right, hold on. Now wait till we get it. Why can't I move this? Okay, so just real quick, this is the final plat for the Gates Rural Subdivision that you guys approved of preliminary construction plans back in, was it August? August that you guys approved it, at the August Planning Board meeting. One of your guys' recommendations or during the motion was for, to get contingent upon DOT approval. Typically, final plats do not go to Planning Board, but I decided to put this on the agenda mainly to show you guys that the, the agreement between DOT and, and DOT signing off on was a shared driveway. So pretty much, um, this show, this is the preliminary and their construction plans, shows a...
Hunter, can I stop? I don't, I don't have anything on the, on the screen. Is anybody else's?
No, it's great.
Sweet.
It's great, all right.
You must have just accidentally shared the wrong screen.
No, I shared the right. It's like, does this crap win?
Oh, cannot wait.
Oh, come on, can't blame you.
And Webex is off.
Is it going to be any better over there?
Uh, yes, we're, we're, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to figure out before that.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So, so basically, this is just being brought, brought in front of you guys to, one, show you the updated plat. You know, once again, per ordinance, it's not necessary that you guys need to make a motion, but since it's slightly changed the overall intent, lot design, lot, the dimensions, none of that's changed. The only thing that's changed is basically the, where the driveway, the two cutouts are going, and then that will sort of alter their tree mitigation plan, as in the same amount of trees per se are going to be removed, but it's just within the parameters, and now that's your driveway. So other than that, it's basically, I mean, I'll answer any questions, but it's pretty much just, you know, have a recommendation from you guys just to, just to include in the packet for council.
If, really fast, if, if they're not, if they're not required to review, then this is, should just be informational.
Okay, and that's fine. And part of it was just with our, like I said, with the minor change in their preliminary plat, that's why I was kind of just going through this process.
Sure.
Does that make sense to everyone?
So we don't?
Yes, we know what I see. We have enough on that. That's what they, you're okay to, just for those two things.
The, are you talking about the sewer, the septic fields? What? Say that again, Rich.
No, I was looking at the wrong thing then. No, I was looking at the ingress and egress, not as a septic.
Yeah, no, so basically, the, the old plan basically had four driveways for the four lots running there, wax on Marvin Road.
Right.
Per, once again, your guys' motion in that meeting was continued upon your review by the engineer, which the engineer signed off, our engineer signed off on it, and then approval from DOT for the driveway permits. The applicant went to DOT and through some, you know, discussion and stuff. That's, they met here in the middle at the two driveway for those, you know, just having two shared driveway accesses for those. And so that's basically the only change from the original plan. And now they're coming back for their final plat, and like I said, it's just going through the process.
So you're asking for a recommendation available to council, I mean, just that we, we recommend as presented? Is that what you're after?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that, that's kind of what was my intent of still putting it on the agenda for you guys. Just because I can, I can still just include that in the memo that you guys reviewed the updated plat and... But when I presented this to council, they had, so they had this information, but I wanted to bring it back to you guys. Presented the preliminary plat and construction plans back in September, and then they had this design that's in front of you now.
Austin, do you want us to vote?
No. If, um...
I mean?
Is this not required in the ordinance, correct?
Correct. I highlighted that. Basically, for the final plat, it just says that it submitted staff review, and then it goes straight to council.
So maybe we just, there were no comments?
Well, yeah.
No additional concerns from the board?
Yeah, without a, a, an official vote, we, we are in agreement with the final plat?
And that works.
Does anybody else have any concerns online?
No concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good, myself.
These are, um, these are actually, it's a USB plat. These are all USB cords.
Oh, shit, sure.
They actually do look like that, huh?
Sorry. All right, super.
All right, so, yeah, just, now this will be on their, final plat will be on council's consent agenda for November for just their approval.
Cool, thanks for updating us.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's an improvement.
Yeah, DOT was trying to have them do one driveway access, and then it was just going to get all complicated and really alter their plans, and then have to make them go back and get their preliminary plat and construction plans. And it, it was just, we were able to finally get that figured out last week, so.
Great.
Good. All right, moving on. Unless there's any further comments. All right, moving on. Discussion review of the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan. I know that after our previous meeting, there was a lot of conversation, and Hunter has supplied a lot of background documentation of our previous conversations, et cetera, for, for people. And I'm going to turn it back over to Hunter now.
Yeah, so I guess I'll start with that.
Do you want me to print copies of that?
If you want. I have at least one copy, but I was in a...
Of all the documentation?
No.
And there's, I, there's, I got a supplement.
Yeah, so, you know, as requested, we put together, you know, I, Austin mainly, I kind of dove in, but whole previous meeting minutes from Planning Board, council, discussion, all of that on how we got to where we're at today. And really, the simple term is, one, the Heritage District dates back to like 2005, or at least the Village Center concept. I've got files back there from 2005, 2006. It's always been kind of this conceptual idea, goal of creating this, this Village Center where you have your village halls and like commercial boutique, restaurant, and, and some type of living component. And so over, over that time up until about, I guess, two, two years ago, that was all conceptual. There was, there was different studies. There was a study done in 2012. I think another one may be done in 14 or 15, and it, you know, kind of all, once again, all that information was then taken into getting this thing actually off the ground. That started, I guess, about, like I said, a year and a half ago. When, when it was first starting to be presented to you guys, it was kind of in the form of the land use plans, future land use map. When you guys were going through the future land, or the land use plan last year, identifying the future land use map, once again, it's kind of identifying parcels and I, and saying, hey, here's their future, future land use designation. Does not mean in whatsoever that that's going to happen, does not mean this property is going to be rezoned. It opens up those properties based off of three, kind of three major things, which is surrounding current uses, surrounding future uses, as well as the current, the, the size and that current use of that, that tract. With that being said, that's how it was kind of identified, is it goes back from the old comp plan from 2006 and a little further on, I mean, and through this process of where this boundary started. You guys reviewed the map and went through certain properties that were mentioned in the last meeting and decided to include them in the future land use map.
These are notes taken directly from the audio and the minutes from the meetings outlined.
And with that being said, the CPNI study was kind of being done at the same time.
Started earlier in the...
It started earlier before you guys reviewed, including these properties into the future land use map. The CPNI study was presented to council in July, and then presented to you guys with their final kind of recommendations in September of last year. The land use plan and map was presented to you guys, the final one, in September, and then adopted by council in November of last year. The, when those plans were adopted, it had the parameters of the current district boundaries that you guys have seen pretty much the last, basically the last year, as well as what's, you know, included, what was being presented in the Form-Based Code, and now what is the same boundary that was presented into the Small Area Plan. The DFI study started, or I guess we contracted with, to do the DFI study right after the land use plan was adopted. And in their study, it had this boundary, so it included the Odell Previs and other properties, right, mentioned. And that's, once again, how we got to then, you know, setting the boundary that the committee, that the MHD Committee, Planning Board, and council has all kind of seen over the last year. Are there any questions on that? Because I'm, I'm starting with the boundary at first, and then we can get into the...
So, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to read and listen at the same time, which is not, can't do either one very well. I'm going to bring them at the same time. So you're, basically you're saying that when we approve the land use plan, the boundaries were locked in?
Yes and no. So here's the land use map. That's in our land use plan. And it has the Village Center, it says, "See Village Center," insert. So once again, yeah. Future land use maps are just the visionary goal. It has no regulatory authority, as in the properties are going to become that, or zone that, or whatever. It's kind of, it's the intent, it's derived from the goal, from the goals outlined throughout the plan, and the other things I mentioned, as in the location of these properties, the surrounding current uses, and the surrounding proposed future uses. Happens all the time in land use plans, identify, you know, crossroad nodes and stuff like that, and identify it for certain, like, more comprehensive future land use maps have probably 10 to 15 different types of future land use designations within the map, as in, like, they break in, like, the density of development, as in they have low density, medium density, high density. They have light commercial, commercial, they have light industrial, heavy industrial, like, all of that stuff. Like Marvin, with it being mainly residential, it's all identity, it's residential, and then the Village Center District was, is what it is. The possible village subzone that was approved part of this map was part of the DF, or that was, I...
That became the basis for the DFI report.
Once again, that, none of that has, basically, the future land use, the intent of why the small area plan is being proposed is to kind of get rid of those subzones. Because that's not clear and doesn't fully make sense. The overall intent is that the Village Center slash Heritage District is a mixed-use district in general. So it's identified on the future land use map as, hey, this is the intent for this boundary. Now, since the Form-Based Code was being derived prior to the Small Area Plan, the reason why we're proposing that future land use map identifying those properties the way they are is because that was what all the work that was done in the Form-Based Code, identifying this commercial, mixed-use, and so on. And so you basically now have, what staff has created in this, in the Small Area Plan is a future land use map designated for this area. Because the area of boundary has already been identified, properties have been included, and so now it's kind of now deriving a few, a further thing. It's the whole reason that a land use plan is important is because when council or Planning Board staff, council, the applicants, whoever is looking at rezoning a property or developing a property, consistency is key. So if an applicant comes to rezone one of these properties to the Heritage District, okay, well, it's within the boundary, and then two, what is, what is their specific plan? And that's where that Small Area Plan, future land use map designation comes in, is that if somebody comes in for a commercial property on Odell and Previs, well, it's not consistent. So that kind of helps keep it within the parameters of what, what the overall goal and intent that was put into the Form-Based Code to where it was at before I came on. Meaning that you're trying, you're, the goal is to safeguard where we're not allowing or trying to promote any type of large cell type, commercial, high-density development, any of that. It's, it's all within the parameters that everybody has seen and been comfortable with over the last year, year and a half as this district has developed. So that's why that land, the Small Area Plan, future land use map is pretty much what was in the Form-Based Code. And with the intent of now doing the district as a conditional zoning district, that's also why we're having a land use map, because originally it's being proposed that all those properties were going to be rezoned all at once, the Heritage District with those sub-things. So now it does provide some flexibility in the longer run. A set of three?
For the, for the property owners.
Well, or, it, it provides, I guess, the village a little bit more control?
That, and it does provide a little bit more flexibility on the property owners, because the, the thing is, and I think what, what I've noticed is that everybody's got this concept of this Heritage District in their head, and it's, they thought in some way or fashion that it was going to happen like that, or that the regulations were going to force these properties to be developed, and that's not the case. It's, the only way that's going to happen is if we own the property, or we had a developer that was about to buy it all and do it all at once. With, you know, those limited resources, we're trying to create the foundation, one, in this plan, and then further on in that Form-Based Code, of creating that opportunity for the district, where then the developer and property owners, one, develop it on their own accord, and two, not at the expense of the village. But like I said, when I first started, like, we're not developers, and so that's kind of the intent, the way it's being derived, is that, hey, the developer is supposed to come in, here's your, here's the application, here's their site plan, here's their development agreement, all of that. And all of that's part of their initial application process that's reviewed by Planning Board and then voted on by council. So if it was done the other way, some of that stuff would have been out, the properties would have been rezoned. And then everything that was in the Form-Based Code that was being proposed, that said by right, those people could have done it by right and never would have, and, and so those things that were never clear or something there would have maybe opened up for, I'm not going to say loophole, it, the...
Interpretation.
Yes, that, and I don't think it would have met what the goal and the intent of the district and everything that you guys have seen. And what I mean by that is that the, the foundation was laid in, in the drafts in that Form-Based Code, but there was no clear guidelines, procedures, definitions, all this stuff. And so when it said permitted uses, and it said like commercial, and it talked about, example, like microbrewery, there wasn't any type of actual special regulations for approval of a special perm, for the special use permit. And so legally by the state, you guys, you and council can't implement or cannot establish conditions on the fly unless it's conditional zoning. So, one, we're putting in those things for the special use permits, but two, that's what the conditional zoning does overall for the district. It allows for the council and plant, like, to, I mean, like I said, say Marvin Gardens, I know that was a headache and that was another thing. I think that lasted five, seven, 10 years. But we're kind of using some of that foundation and making sure all of that's done upfront. And on that, everybody knows what's kind of being proposed. The developer comes with a development agreement, it's kind of negotiated, and basically, at the end of the day, council can vote not, can vote to not approve the application, can work with the developer to... Or, I mean, Planning Board's recommendations could be extra conditions, then council can say, yes, we want those conditions as well. The developer can either say, yeah, I'm, I'm good with those conditions, or not, and try to have it voted on without those conditions, and it'll get denied, or can just, you know, walk away from their application. So like, that's kind of the overall intent in the long run of this, is that it does provide flexibility as well. It provides flexibility, but it provides ultimate control and, and authority on the bill, I mean, with the village, within the village parameters.
So one of the things I think is, that was not consistent with the Form-Based Code was the land use plan's use of transitional density. It was not applied across the board. So how do you, and I'm just, as a general question, I don't... When someone comes in to apply for a conditional use permit?
Hold on, conditional use or conditional zoning?
Conditional zoning.
Yeah, they're not, and that's why the state changed the law. It's not...
I gotta get, I gotta get my link down.
It's special use and conditional zoning, but go ahead.
Okay, okay, so one of the two, all right? I gotta get, I gotta get my acronyms. But let's say that, for instance, there's a rural property there that has not, that is currently rural, no matter what they want to do in the future, but someone wants to put commercial next to it. At, like, now, as opposed to later. So like, how do you reconcile that? Because they're going to have to, they can only build or, or ask for a permit or zoning based on what's next to them. But in the future, that, what, what a budding property might actually be, like a higher-density property, you know what I mean? Like, it, so the, I don't know if I'm making sense. It's, it makes sense in my head.
So that's, okay, I think I'm, okay, well, that was some of the issues.
If it's being piecemealed.
And that's, okay, and that's where, once again, we're separating the Form-Based Code from the Small Area Plan, because all, a lot of the stuff you're bringing up will come when we review the Form-Based Code, because there's a lot that myself and Tom have put together, more regulations, stuff that's clear, and really thought through certain things in that, because that wasn't thought through when it was proposed to you guys prior. And so the intent there is that, once again, you're looking at the district as a whole. We can't force property owners to do whatever, and so there's still certain parameters with the buffer and the surrounding uses and stuff that will come into play. It also, in the Form-Based Code, has, you know, at the outer, the properties surrounding the district, there's regulations in for any properties that abut, I mean, for example, Odell Previs let, that abuts Meadowlark, that has to have additional buffering and screening requirements, same thing for, for Fentress property with 3.0 acres here. So that's where, when we get into the Form-Based Code, that stuff will be, that's when you can, that, that, like, hopefully your answer will be, the answer to your question can be answered then.
Okay. So I think, I think like the Vaishnery property and the Filbrick property are the two kind of outliers that could have like commercial on them, but they abut, they could be abut... Could have like commercial on them, but they abut, they could be abutting rural. Rural communities or by right communities. So I guess in a by right can, so so that's like, those are just like two properties that come to mind where I'm like. This could be tough because the Vaishnerys are next to municipal, but they're also next to by right. And then, you know what I mean, so.
The, and that's where I can, in your path, let me pull up the plan, because I want to show you. Why this is also added into it and hopefully makes.
So if it's your question, though, you're, you're concerned about whatever may be repurposed, reused, because it's, it's abutting that. And so if I have. A piece of property that I would like to continue to, again, by right, I want to sell it for residential, but now on the budding. Commercial, you're afraid that i- is it possible that because of this, what we call the transitional density, that property value could go down?
You know, it's, it's more about. Sorry, it's more about, um, there are, there are three homes. Currently being, the three properties currently being used as residential that could potentially be rezoned like commercial. Um, but some of them already abut rural. And one abuts um municipal and by right neighborhood. So in terms of transitional density. What are they even gonna be allowed to zone? Because in the, in the, in the previous rendition. They were being, they were being allowed to be commercial, but you can't put commercial next to rural, for instance. Cause the original, the Odell property was being, um, was gonna be a rural subdivision, but then. The Philbrook property is right next to it and that's with light commercial. So that was, it just wasn't consistent with the land use plan. So, that's, I'm just, those are the kinds of questions that like I, I think about when I think about this and I, I'm, I'm hoping that whatever gets proposed will address them, but like. They're just these kind of like little one offs that are kind of tough. What do you do with them? Because they.
So, once again, it's, the thing is, is like. The way you're thinking is, yes, it's valid and that's why you have regulations in place which will be in the form base code, but. That's the whole thing, like, and I'm not, once again, I think that's where this misconception of how. The district was being originally proposed with, you know, having these properties rezoned, it's not gonna happen overnight, so it's still the same concept. It still would have, it still would have happened the same way as in, okay, even all those properties are rezoned and get, that gives them the opportunity. Or, like, you can't make somebody legally change their property to conform with the zoning. However. So it still would be the same concept. If one of those residentials, it got rezoned to commercial in the previous rendition is. It could be a hundred years or twenty, let's just say fifteen, twenty, and everything else that revolves around it, it can hold out. It happens all the time in small town America.
My, my question is really about what if they do want to rezone.
Yeah, and so that's where the.
How does it fall within the alignment that we already have set up? Because looking at those, looking at those pieces of property, right, those, those small ones, it doesn't look like by what we have. It looks like what we are saying is like, yes, you have the opportunity to zone commercial.
Correct.
If you so choose, right? That's what we're effectively saying. However, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing, and I think this goes to one of the questions I asked you earlier today is. But how does that work if zoning that to commercial is against the way we have it set up?
In the land use plan.
In the land use plan.
Well, first, you know, you said Philbrook going commercial, I don't think that ever was in any of our conversations.
It was, yeah, like a commercial, he wants it turned into an office.
He wanted to use it as an engineering office, that's, yeah, that's been discussed.
That's always been, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's always been the case.
So, but was he not following the potential that makes the use heritage district?
So, yeah.
Because he wanted to completely commercial on that piece of property.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you know, this is obviously, well, no, I've heard it from him too, I guess I can say, um. There was TJ because of the, and he has a different set of circumstances because. He's got to deal with the drama of the, the roundabout coming into his front yard, right? So, um, he's got a whole nother set of issues, um, but. At the time we were discussing it, the Odell property was going to be a nine home rural community. That was right next to TJ's property and TJ wanted to be like commercial. So. And that's, that's what it was being identified as on our, on the, um, the last map that we had, right? So, it was like commercial, but that is not consistent with the land use plan.
I'm not following what you're, what do you mean? It's not, one, not consistent, but two, the last map you had, what it was map are you referring to?
Well, this is the map, right, of the land use plan?
That's the land, like I said, I'm trying to, I mean, cause the two things here is, I'm, I'm not fully understanding you and then, um, going back to your question, I'm not fully. Understanding your question either with if a, I know you, what you're, I guess what you're trying to ask, like, are you saying that? In the small area plan, like hypothetically, the small area plan is adopted with those, those designate, those future land use designations and somebody comes along. And are, and wants to then, are you trying to take a mix, mix you, what do you, which property, give me an example?
So the, the little bitty commercial that's looking, and I, I have no idea who owns the piece of property. The little bitty one that's looking like it may only have the option of commercial that's over here next to the new.
It's the box, it's the box ready.
Okay.
The box ready.
How does it, is that consistent? Cause I thought we had to have buffers with, before you could go commercial right next to.
So, once again, so that's where. In the law, when we get to the form base code and go into that process and procedures and the regulation and that. Is when they come to apply for that rezoning to, to have a potential of commercial there. That they would have to have that side plan and they would have to be then conform their lot as, I mean, compliance. Is part of that, which the regulations when it comes to buffering of surrounding land uses and so on, they must comply, I mean, that's all part of their application process.
But the land use plan is more than just buffering, it's about transitional, it's about trans- transitional density. So. For instance, you cannot have a commercial piece, piece of property up next to a rural neighborhood or a rural, like, um, and there's a ton of rural. All around this, so you have, so the way the land use plan reads is it would be, um, rural, by right. From by right, it would be like a higher density, um, higher density residential, then like commercial. Then commercial.
I'll have to, I have no idea what you're referring to in the land use plan with that. Cause you're talking about, I know like transitional density and stuff, but like, that's the thing is the land use plan is not regulatory in whatsoever. As in, so when you're talking about buffering and requirements, all those are recommendations. So unless they're in our ordinance. We can't, that, that, we can't force somebody, like, we have to, the. The land use plan and the small area plan are all regu- or, um, like a guidance vision type document. They provide, produce, uh, provide recommendations, goals and outlines stuff that. Then the governing body, the plant, the recommend, the planning board staff, take those recommendations. And then derive ordinances or or from, from those goals. So when you're talking about transitional density or buffering and stuff. All those are just recommendations and goals because our land use plan does not have any direct regulatory authority that I can make somebody do something.
Okay, so that is actually, was not what we were told. So we were told that by approving the land use plan, the land use plan then. Informs the ordinances, so they then become, so that that is technically. The land use plan, you have to, everything has to go like that, that gets, has to be compared to the land use plan. Is this consistent with land use plan?
Correct.
I mean, that's been.
But even something not being consistent with the land use plan doesn't bar it from being approved.
That and two, the other thing is unless, unless we have those regulate, regulations already in our ordinance. Or staff or planning boards reviewing that and making recommendations to amend our ordinances to become consistent with our land use plan. They're not in our ordinances for us to actually regulate and have that authority to force people to do that.
Okay, well now I'm, now I have a major concern.
If, if, for example, and, and if something is approved that is not consistent with the land use plan. Um, if a development is approved that's not consistent with like the future land use map, that map is then updated to be consistent. Correct.
Wait, say that again?
Let's, so let's say, let's say, let's say tomorrow, um.
I want to get added to the Marvin Heritage District Committee, or I want, like, my land wants to get added, because it's across the street. So use it as an example.
Okay, so let's say, let's say Melinda wants, Melinda wants her property to join the heritage district. The council can look, can look at the land use plan and say, it's not consistent, but yes, we approve it and now. The map's updated and yours is in the heritage district.
And to build off of that, if it's something's not consistent.
So like, what the hell have you been doing?
I'm not adding it.
No, and even though it's not consistent. So that, okay, to try to clarify there is the reason that the land use plan, they have, like I said, there's goals, recommendation and outlines. If it's not consistent, the elected body has to state why. It it like goes on record and they have to give evidence on why. So. Simple answer for you is that your property abuts it and. Uh, honestly, that's kind of the only direct, I, I don't know how many acres you have and stuff, but like, in, in theory, it's like. The intent there is where it does kind of provide flexibility, but like. You, they can't really go out of the parameters for no reason. They have to have some type of direct. Either a nut, to, they have to tie it into another goal or recommendation within the land, like, it's inconsistent with the map. But it can be like consist, but their justification reasoning is X, Y, and Z because of other areas of the plan or something or ordinance or whatever.
So, let me throw this, you know, i- as an example, and maybe I'm totally wrong. I, you know, the, in the bigger news within where we live. You know, Charlotte's been talking about there was a twenty fifty plan or something, and they're talking about in their. Twenty fifty plan, which basically is a land use plan, right? Talking about being able to allow duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes in existing residential areas. You know, and just because they haven't approved it yet, but just because they approved that. Doesn't mean that someone can come in there then and say, I want to bulldoze these three houses and build a quadplex or something.
We understand that, it's talking about, we, we understand that you can propose something and not have it approved, but. My concern is protecting the rural properties. And I thought that the land use plan did that, but now what you're telling me is that they are not technically protected.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if in the, in the land use plan and those goals and recommendations, those are goals and recommendations and stuff like that. But if we, one, you're talking about transition density and buffering and stuff, like. We can't, there's no enforcement in that. However, in a proposal, a, if it's a rezoning proposal for the heritage district. Council is supposed, the, the intent of that and saying they were planning board when they're reviewing that proposal to make their recommendation. Is that there, that proposal is not consistent because it's not, it's not consistent with goal X, Y, Z because of transition. Density, buffering, surrounding uses, all that other stuff that's la- laid out there. That's all put into the, once again, the final decision. And if council then tries to approve it, they have to have a justification on everything that is not, not consistent with. So it. In theory, yes, like I said, it's a guide and vision and it has its goals and recommendations, but it doesn't have any type of actual regulatory authority.
Right, right, no, and I, and I understand that. Um, we were told that the land use plan comes first and then the ordinances.
Correct.
So it informs the ordinances. So now my question is, why have we not been writing ordinances to sup- that support the land use plan?
I've, I mean, honestly, it's, it, in my experience, sometimes land use plans sit there on a shelf for municipalities and never get touched. When sixty, you kind of change that where you gotta have to ma- I mean, to make one, you have to have a plan that's updated so often. You gotta have, um, when you're adopting text amendments, rezonings, anything to the ordinances. You have to review the land use plan and once again, you know, state if it's consistent or not. The whole thing that where, why are we not doing X, Y, and Z is because one, I mean, I don't know about previous staff, but sometimes it comes down to staff, staff time. I mean, we don't necessarily have the staff time to, hey, we're gonna derive these ordinances. That is something as a board, as a, a, you know, a recommended board, like, that's something you guys can say, hey. We want to maybe look at these goals and look at maybe deriving ordinances to, that's no problem. Same thing, council can do the same thing. They can say, hey. You know, reviewing the land use plan, this is something that we probably need to, we're directing staff to. To derive an ordinance from and and go through the process. But other than that, it's not, um. One, it was just approved in November. Two, I, I couldn't tell you if there was anything. In, in motion in between November until I started that some of these uh ordinances were being updated. I, Austin can correct, I mean, Austin can verify for me here. I went through our ordinances and there's a lot of things that we need to update and and change.
It's a mess.
And so once MHD and some other things kind of get off my plate, that's where I'm, I'm gonna get there.
In any way, a, I'm not saying this like, why haven't you done this? I, I think I'm just, I, I think I'm trying to get clarification on. The, the process, like why it's been approved for almost a year. Why have we not done anything with it yet?
Well, I, I think that's what we thought we were doing with the form based code. And then, you know, council looked at it and says, let's think about this, because we, we actually sent the form based code to council. And they said, timeout, send it back to us, uh, which, which is probably good.
Well, send it back to staff, then the heritage district committee and now here.
So it killed two birds with one stone and and write ordinances into the form base code, basically.
Well, that is, the form base code is the ordinance, right?
For the heritage district.
For the heritage district, yeah.
So, yeah, and, and I guess the small area plan.
This is the executive summary, the central.
So, take back exactly what you, or not take back, but I'm referencing exactly what you just said. Of the plant, the plan comes first and the ordinances are derived from the plan. So that is why the small area plan for the heritage district is being proposed to you guys. Because in theory, the form based code language shouldn't be on your guys' mind or any of that. Those goals and recommendations that were kind of. Derod- that was kind of, that whole process that the planning board committee, council staff put into developing the form based code. Is kind of as Al- Austin stated, the executive summary slash those goals and recommendations outlined in the small area plan. So then in theory, when we get to the form based code. Next month or whenever we start reviewing it and you guys go through. The intent there is like, we tie it basically, the small area plan's the foundation. You guys look at the land use plan and the small area plan, because the small area plan, the intent is to be adopted within the land use plan, but it's, it's, it's an amendment to our overall land use plan, but it's a separate document. Um.
The small area plan?
Yes, i- it's, it's, it's adopted into our overall land use plan. But it's also why it's been, it's a kind of an appendix or, um, where. Staff, planning, whatever can pick it up and be, not have to go through the whole land use plan, they can pick it up for specifically for this district.
Right.
Um, kind of like our Greenway master plan, all that stuff, like all that's approved in our, um, is, is part of our overall conference land use plan. With that being said, so that's the, the small area plan is all, it's, as also, the way it was derived is pretty much. Going back over the public comment, the pub, or the public involvement that's been in this the last year and a year and a half, like I said, that's. What I, what we know of, I mean, with the, there was a public involvement or public engagement meeting. The, um, established committee, all of that, that's what creates this plan. So I know there was like a meeting like about, or I can't remember who it was, asked like. Hey, in the small area plan about where it says makes use and stuff, like what, what is the, or or like what are the uses and stuff in this? When we get into the form based code, that's where planning, I mean, like.
That's where it's spelled out.
Yes, in, in, in simple terms, that's where it's spelled out. That's where those uses are defined, that is where those uses are, um, decided on, all of that. So. The plan is.
And those uses have already been recommended by both the committee and the planning board months ago.
Yeah, but there's other, but the, the, the changes that we're making is, like I said, adding definition, defining them processes and. And clarifying overall with when it comes to buffer. Um, I mean, I have a huge list. I mean, when we get to the form based code, half of it's gonna be highlighted yellow because of what you guys saw between, because that's what's. The difference between what you guys saw in June compared to now. So, once again, these are two different documents and I have like a matrix outline here and I can pull this up. I'll just do that real quick, cause it may.
About what is included in each one?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, cause I'm trying to take notes and if you've already done it, I don't want to waste my time.
Okay.
So is that matrix, can you show like for the, for the mixed use, the R? For residential and commercial?
No, this matrix is just basically the difference of what you guys have already seen. And what, what, what the small area plan. So. The comp plan has already been adopted and those policies, those, you know, goals and recommended policies and stuff are already a separate thing. Those, it's, you know, in this, it's being retained and it's amending and adding those into the small area plan. Um, same thing with the future land use map, already adopted, boundary set and sort of those sub, subzones. We're mending to add a specific future, a, a better future land use map than this little possible one specifically for this, uh, heritage district. Um, this adds consistency from the plan to the zoning ordinance. Kind of what you're at, what you were saying and, you know, the overall intent of what the, both of these plans do is it derives ordinances that. You know, based off of the goals, recommendations and input that was put into the, what the land use plan and the small area plan. Um. So when it comes to the zoning ordinance, that's the form based code. And so when we get there, you guys will review that and then the process would be to, um, um, do a zoning tech. Do a zoning text amendment to stab, to adopt the MHD form-based code as one document. And then that will establish the language into our ordinances where that will give the regulatory authority. For the council to, council staff, whoever, to actually regulate. Um, any proposals for the district, because the district, or if you're establishing the language and then proposals will come. Uh, zoning map, basically, we would update it to show kind of similar to the. I have got a copy of it back in my, but we've already amended the zoning or updated the zoning map. It has not been amended because it hasn't been uh uh voted on. But if the district gets established, we would put a boundary basically saying, these properties are the only ones that are eligible to apply. For the MHD conditional zoning district. And so it's not opening up this zoning language to properties that aren't within those parameters. That's kind of the intent there is that. To your your point is, you don't have, you don't have this district kind of grow. Out more than the original intent was and you also don't have it. You don't have some property across Marvin that's vacant trying to apply for the same standards and 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 um. Uses that are within this district. So, um. Go ahead, Rick.
No, as you said, we said so, it's like the zoning isn't going to invite transition. It's it's just, it's it's there. If we want to, if we still.
Correct. When we get to the zoning language itself, it's establishing the regulatory language. That, uh, one, it allows for property owners within the established boundary to apply for that zoning district. But then it also, um, it then provides the set of design standards, uses. A lot, I mean, all these, everything that we've discussed, I mean, buffering, uh, all of that. Then if they're applying for that, they mustn't. Um, if they're applying for that zoning designation, they mustn't conform and comply with what the ordinance states, which then that would be that form-based code language. So that's where you get into. Does, is the adequate buffer there? Is that on their side plan to make sure that it's there? All all of that is then taken into that process when that, when the applicant applies for this conditional zoning.
Okay, so, sorry, go ahead. We keep using this, well, we, you keep using the word intent. Right, and and I philosophically understand that, I think. What happens if in twenty years? The intent will not be the same as it is today. Because the the planning board is different, the council is different, and this interpretation of those things becomes. Different. My question is. If we piecemeal the, I'm not saying I'm against this, right, I'm genuinely asking, but if we piecemeal. People where they they may have the ability to apply for this zoning. And one piece does now and one piece does in twenty years, how do we not end up with like the worst patchwork qu- patchwork quilt? Ever, which by the way would be my sewing. How do we not end up with that based on intent with that being? A fluid concept?
That is why the district's proposed as a form-based code. Because if it was just a regular, what the form-based code does is it. One, it's it's called form-based code because it's the the way that the ordinance is presented and all that pictures, and it focuses on design. And um like lot design, aesthetic design, all of that, other than a sta- stereotypical like ordinance like ours, like in the uses and lot dimensions and so on. So that's one way to keep that, and that's the consistency factor of, once the ordinance is established. That's what anybody in the um district has to conform to. Now, you're talking about twenty years. Yeah, a lot can happen. One way for that, the only way for an applicant, it's a, for for that not to happen is if. If an applicant slash requests a difference and council approves it slash council amends the ordinances itself. Because that can happen in anything, anything you you want. The other thing is there is that now with one sixty D, your land use plan is supposed to be updated every so often, but ten, I think you're supposed to have it at least updated every ten year, have a minimum of ten years. And part of that intent is that where one, these these land use plans don't go sit on the shelf for X amount of years like Marvin's previous one did from two thousand and six until last year.
Two thousand and four.
Or two thousand and four until last year. Um, what that also does is, you know, with the the change in planning board members or council members, it does then. Create kind of that discussion on always updating the plan. Um, and what I mean by that is where you don't have something that's dated, so if something, if times change or the intent overall changes, like. It's being looked at consistently instead of getting further down the road and then.
Those ideas are staying fresh and everyone's aligned who's involved in the process.
So, once the ordinance is established, it's it's establishing our ordinance. The only way for it to be taken out is if. Council or somebody applied for that whole the language to be removed. But. But that's why, once the ordinance is established, that's where that, in the form-based code format, that's where that design and everything that you just asked, that's where it can creates consistency. I said, the only other way this could be done in the right way is that if the village owned all of it. And that's kind of why we're doing it this way, though, is because they don't own it, but if a property owner wants to do something. Like what we're kind of trying to give them the opportunity to, they have the control, the council has the control in 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 um. And and within the authority that's uh with the design and all that, that's kind of in that form-based code form, and that's, how am I trying to say this? Council then has the control to regulate that, um, what happens on those properties. But they're looking at, and what I mean by that, though, it's in coordination with what's being proposed in this plan and 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 further in the ordinance.
And that was a short form answer.
And.
And all of the information you presented, which was uh, you provided history, you provided everything, I mean, it's almost. Are you asking us tonight to take a vote on the small area plan?
So, yes, the only thing that's on the agenda tonight is the review of the small area plan, which just basically need either, I mean. It's gonna, how am I trying to say it? Because it's not gonna, coun- council is going to probably vote on this one way or the another, as in. They can not adopt the land use, the the small area plan based off of that recommendation or they they can adopt. So the basically, the recommendation you guys are making is to um recommend either council to a- approve. The Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan or to not approve it. And then whenever you guys make your recommendation, it goes to council for the for the vote. Um, this is only the small area plan. This has nothing to do with the form-based code language. All of that will come back to you guys. Whenever this small area plan gets either, like I said, adopted or not adopted. Because if the small area plan. Doesn't get adopted in theory, then, I mean, it's, the the form-based code can still be reviewed, but it it just, it's, makes no sense to not have this plan. And the plan does not do anything other than. Create kind of that guide and vision that quote-unquote derives the ordinance from in the future, but we've already kind of got the ordinance done, so.
Is it fair to say this plan is the concept, but the form-based code is the details and the how?
Yeah, correct.
Were we at that point to make a motion?
What page are we supposed to be on? I I just, we had even.
Fifty-three, I think is the one that's got. Right, that's the small area plan?
Correct, the small area plan.
Page fifty-three.
Small area plan was the first memo inside of three. It's the same thing that you guys represented last month, outside of um. A few changes which we highlighted in the memo, which basically we went in there, per some of you guys' recommendations and added. A little bit more clarification um on certain things. We added a current land use map of this district showing, you know. Because current land use is something that needs to be taken in consideration of. One, looking at the future land use map and how that's derived, but as well as. Um, if an applicant comes, the kind of what you guys point is like, the current surrounding uses are important to know, um, what's existing there. So, uh. So within the plan, like I said, it kind of identifies those goals, vision and and stuff that was. Partly in the overall land use plan is, I mean, all the goals and recommendations were straight out of the adopted land use plan. Pretty much, this just puts in um additional information and 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 also, it's like an executive summary of how the. In in theory, it will be. Looking back on it, it's supposed to be like, okay, now, this is how the form-based code got deri- or got. Presented or derived from is from what's in this small area plan to an extent.
This is the small area plan.
Yes.
Dozen pages or two dozen, whatever it is.
Yep.
And with, including the backup appendices.
Yep, which includes the.
Survey report.
Survey and is it the FBI study?
This the, it's it's the survey report from uh twenty nineteen and then it's the CP and IR report, I believe.
Yeah. So, I want to answer one other question too. Um, I know that came up the last meeting. Uh, how did some of those properties, those smaller properties in general, kind of get identified as commercial? Um, the way it was being presented in the form-based code is, like I said, it's kind of confusing, but the overall. Heritage District is a mixed-use district. It's a mixed-use of, the intent is having residential mixed along like commercial and and and. Office and institutional and all that. It's a mix, it's a district of mixed uses in general. Being specific properties that state mixed use is the reason they were put. Or being being proposed in the future land use map is that, is because of the size of those properties that they are um. The highest and best use is like, hey, commercial, we want some type of commercial component, but we don't want large-scale commercial. So, with it being mixed use, part of the goal and recommendation in the plan as well and in the ordinance is that if it's, if they go with that mixed use. Um, debt MHD designation, they have to have some type of residential component on there, where then the whole property is not commercial. So then get into why those those smaller properties are identified as commercial only is because they're not large enough to have some type of residential component on it. So, it opens them up to either one, state of current, underlying Marvin residential and residential use. Or it opens them up for those those commercial uses. So, um. That's kind of, I hope, maybe answered some of that, why some of those properties were the way they are and the other mean, but.
So, is light commercial, does that fit into mixed use or light commercial is also in commercial only?
When you say.
So I'm I'm just confused because um, like Philbrook's property says mixed use, but it's just one piece of property.
So the reason, okay.
Vice, vice, vice already.
Boss already.
Boss already. His property is just one property, but it's red for commercial only, so.
Correct, so that is where, take that existing, if you go back to the form-based code, there was that existing building subset section. Which made no sense.
And it was just Philbrook's property and and Will Owens' property, the little red brick bungalow over here.
In in theory, we can take. You can, I mean, like I said, i- it's kind of, it's, you take those two properties and can make them commercial, or you take the other commercial and can make them mixed use and just go with the commercial. It's then you just, we have to then clarify in the small area plan on what that means. And what I'm trying to get at that is the reason those two were identified as mixed use is because, one, they're surrounded by. At least Owens' property is mixed use and then uh Philbrook is right outside of the residential only and it's just kind of on an island. Uh, once again, that's in here, it was discussed to put in for light commercial in in previous meetings, but. At at the end of the day, I mean. You.
The original, part of the original purpose of that existing structured district district was to not change the existing structure.
Correct.
So that was why it was in a separate, it was in a separate category that would have very limited uses, which the which the. The committee and this board discussed prior.
So, yes, and so the reason I, yes, the reason why it's identified as mixed use is because the special uses, the permitted uses and special uses in that existing. Were very similar to the mi- in the form-based code. As the mixed, mixed uses, the mixed use permitted and special uses. I hope that makes sense, I was a tongue twister. With that being said, when, if one of those properties wants to rezonate and use that property for either a light commercial office. There, the um, they have to go through the same process if it was going to be, or it's a different process, it's act- uh. The way it was being proposed is a special use permit, but now, since it's all conditional zoning district, they would have to still apply for it to be conditionally rezoned. And then meet those standards and and additional, um, like I said, council, planning, I mean, planning boards of recommendation of additional, some type of. Buffering requirements, I mean, all of that. I mean, that's that's in a way, honestly, your other safeguard that I didn't even mention, it's like. When it come, when an application comes, the, in a special use permit, you don't have that authority unless it's kind of adopted in the ordinance of what. Additional special requirements are needed for that use. With a conditional zoning, you can recommend any type of additional. Um. Uh, requirements, and if the developer either agrees to it or, like I said, doesn't, then council can deny it. Meaning if there is a need for additional buffering requirements or a concern of all that, or it's brought up in a public hearing that, hey, this buffering is not. Sufficient enough. Well, they can then mandate that as an extra condition of their approval for that rezoning application.
I just, I don't know. I I honestly, I don't like the commercial only and the fact that it's backing up to a buy right neighborhood.
I mean, there's buffers built into all this.
Once again, all that's in the form-based code.
I know, but the, this. So, what, we're being asked to approve something, but we don't actually know how any of these things are going to be protected or not protected until the next stage goes. So it's like, so that's.
This is thirty seven, thirty thousand feet. The next meeting is when you would have, get the chance to look at those specifics to determine how that's going to be regulated. This just establishes the concept.
The other reason that that map is in this plan is because if we did it and just did a Heritage District map, those. Future land use designations do tie into the form-based code designations and 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 what I, and and the property designation and the lot design designation, all of that. So, yes, when we get into the form-based code, that's where you will have that that authority, but at the same like, or or have like, that's where you establish the regulatory authority. The small area plan, once again, that the, you honestly can take that map out and just adopt the plan, but at the same time, like that, that plan kind of. Makes it consistent of everything that's been done in the last year, year and a half.
I'm not real sure that all of your. Questions or concerns will. Be resolved. You know, period. So, and I'm not sure about everybody on on the line here. Uh, I'm not sure that there were any other questions, I, you know, let's. Any other conversation or questions from everybody there?
I didn't necessarily have any questions. I mean, I've had to read through this multiple times. Austin, I appreciate you giving me that that thirty thousand-foot overview, so again, we're creating framework, we've got boundaries. We're we're talking about what it is that we're setting up. We still have the ability in the future. Put ordinances out there and I and I get the fact, and that's what I talked about earlier, just because we have zoning out there, it doesn't necessarily invite the transition. Yes, it may, people that have buy right may not like the commercial that's back there, but then again. That's where we're like, it looks like when we're creating the mixed-use heritage, which is going to be what, thirty percent residential, seventy percent commercial. It gives lots of options.
Not even that.
I I again, I've read through this and I and I and understand, I think, what we've got out there, so I just think that'd be other.
I think that's part of, you know, maybe just this.
The district's going to be thirty percent open space.
Yeah, all right, but anyway, so.
It'll be usable open space.
Any open space is usable.
Hmm, swamp now. I mean, and that and that was like something that we talked about a while back was. You know, the claim of having parks and, you know, there's a lot of land in there that is swamp and. Is not usable, so it's not really, I mean, yes, you're preserving the tree canopy, but you're not, you're not actually creating usable park space. So, I don't think that ever got resolved. I don't know, did it?
Well, I think we were going to discuss, that's part of the form-based code, right? Then we can say like, if you, if it's usable, then if it's a swamp, you gotta put. Walk paths on it, right, like they do over on the Greenway, like we can.
You can smell it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
No, it was Louisiana over here. Yeah, no, it was Louisiana over here.
Oh, yeah.
Word on the street from the.
Y'all need to get around, y'all need to, y'all need to.
Bulldogs are stuck in one of those swamps. Gordon Sherry said it.
Anyway.
That'd be a fun scavenger, huh?
Right?
Anyway. Would anyone like to present a motion? And it could be for or against, whatever, so that we can move on.
I'll present a, uh, motion that we recommend the Form Based Code.
Uh, the small area.
Small area.
Sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm, I had it in front of me and I moved it. Small area plan.
Are you recommending approval or denial? Okay.
Alright, uh.
So no, there needs to be a second.
A second from anyone?
I will second that we adopt the small area plan, which is the provision presented by Senate.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would just like to note, since we're getting ready to vote, that from my understanding, it is possible regardless of whether or not the Marvin Heritage District gets approved, including the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan, that if we were not to have it, while there may be additional hoops to dump, to jump through, it does not prevent res- landowners from applying to potentially use their property as mixed use or commercial.
Correct.
It is more difficult.
It's more difficult and.
But if the Marvin Heritage District, and, and I understand then that there's all the, then there's not the control and all of the, right? Like all the caveats.
The control's still there, but if you don't have this plan and the ordinance to kind of regulate, then that goes from the underlying zoning and then that's where you would have your patchwork quill of no consistency of design. And so it, there's pros and cons, well, it's, pros and cons to vote, like basically if you just leave it where you let property owners do their own individual conditional zoning district.
Right.
But the majority of the cons is like, that opens it up for, in theory, that applicant can come in and propose, I mean, whatever they want.
Sure.
With, with having it as the MHD and having those already established, you know, design, uh, uses, all that, then it kind of narrows them on what they can apply for.
Right.
So, so, so to answer your question, yes, it, it can, it, any property owner has a right to try to do something, whatever they want. They just have to go through the proper process. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor? On high. Three.
And so, I.
Ken. Are you keeping up there, Austin?
Yeah, Ken?
Ken?
Yes, I was the first by.
Okay, sorry, so we're.
And opposed?
I just have problems with some of the, it's not in a general, it's just small problems with this that I'm just not comfortable saying yes to.
Alright, so we have.
It's five to two.
Five to two. It's recommended to the council, which is all we're doing.
Yep, so with that being said, the intent of our November meeting is to review, to start reviewing the updated Form Based Code draft.
Yep.
In no way, shape or form do I think we're going to get to that in one meeting.
How did you figure that out?
Have faith.
One thing I, I would ask, and, and Austin, we can figure out how, we, Austin and I have discussed this and I know that November, you're, you're coming up on, I mean, November with Thanksgiving and you got December with, you know, Christmas as well as, um, I mean, just everything else kind of going on, on staff and with the elections and then, uh, the council meetings and so on. I would like for, and, and we don't necessarily have to make the motion maybe tonight, but I want to get your guys' input on, our meeting's on November twenty.
The next meet, the next planning board meeting is November sixteenth.
Calling for, uh, what, and we have, when's the HOA meeting?
HOA meeting is, is the eleventh, which is the Thursday before.
I said, for one thing, I don't want to take a month in between, and I'm not even still saying two meetings, we'll get through maybe the full Form Based Code, but the, my intent is to potentially have our regular scheduled November meeting and then a special meeting either that same week or the week before, the week after.
You also can recess the meeting to a later date. You don't necessarily have to, a special, but you can.
We just, yeah, so.
So it's like Thanksgiving's like the next week.
Yeah, so, in simple terms, we can have a regular scheduled meeting on the sixteenth and then, but I'm bringing this up where everybody kind of maybe send their availability for those two weeks.
I would just talk about that now.
Okay.
That way I'm not juggling.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is if we do it after, let's say we do it the Wednesday or Thursday after, so the seventeenth or eighteenth, um, then we can have our regular scheduled meeting and then we would recess to, let's just say, Thursday, the eighteenth at six o'clock, to continue discussing the Form Based Code draft. The intent there is, once again, at the end of that November meeting, you guys can make recommendation, or if we have those two meetings, we can get through it, we can make a recommendation, but at the same time, that at least gives you back-to-back time where we go through this, pretty much this whole document or whatever, you guys answer your questions, and then we come back in December or January and answer those questions or address them and then make the recommendation. You know, if, if, make the recommendation if it, if it's ready to go. But I don't, I, I personally do not want to have a month in between.
That, that way, that way everybody stays fresh on the topic.
And we, we get as much feedback as we, I get as, staff gets as much feedback as we can to then, one, keep the same kind of, yes, moving forward, but at the same time, it's all fresh in your guys' mind and we make sure we can get as much valid and, and, um, important input and recommendations from you guys.
This is Ken, I've got a, a suggestion, I'm not sure whether this is impossible to some new, but, um, would it be, if people have questions about what's in writing now, can they be submitted to staff in advance of the meeting?
Yes, I mean, anytime there's questions with the agenda packets or, or an item, um, you know, a, an agenda or an agenda topic, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email saying, hey, like, I'm not understanding this, or if you catch a mistake on my end, if it's something that I left out, hey, like, let me know, because I, um, I'll be happy to make sure you guys are comfortable and understand it, but at the same time, like, it helps me maybe prepare for something I didn't think about. And so then I can go ahead and have that information ready to present to the whole board during the meeting.
Because chances are.
Just looking at what's happened, you know, over the past two or three months, it, it seems like that might expedite the reprocess.
Correct.
Because we have a meeting and we're raising questions at the meeting and then we're waiting for the next meeting to get answers.
Well, there were actually a lot of questions raised through email as well, so we were just tonight getting answers to questions that were raised through email.
Oh, I, then maybe we're doing what I suggested already.
It's a good suggestion.
Yep, did you get an email?
Nope.
I didn't get any email.
Oh, yeah, I mean, Christina and I have been emailing back and forth, aren't you guys on the emails?
Nope.
Well, they can't tell if you guys want emails or it becomes a meeting, right?
Yeah, so it'd have to be if we, you mean, once again, respond individually, um, but, uh, the intent here is that the Form Based Code draft.
We run like one.
For, for this example, the Form Based Code draft will be presented, um, to the MHD Strategic Planning Committee on the four, November fourth.
Yes, yes.
And, um, and so that, that will go out to them next week, the first of next week, because the draft, between myself and Tom, have gotten the draft updated to, to get that to that committee and then right after they make their recommendation, I'll go ahead and send it to you guys prior to the packets going out, so you guys can start reviewing it. And, and, um, make notes, comments, and, and, you know, bring, and send them to me, uh, and then I'll prepare and ha- have those answers and, and stuff looked at prior to the meeting.
Also, also, while we're, while we're having this discussion, looking at the calendars, anyone, would anyone have trouble theoretically? If we had the meeting on the sixteenth as planned and then we, we, at the end of the meeting, we just recessed the meeting to two days later on the eighteenth? Does anyone anticipate any attendance problems?
Sounds good.
I do.
Okay, Michael?
I do. Yep.
What if we recessed to the next day, the seventeenth?
The sixteenth is my problem.
Oh.
I'm not in town on the sixteenth, I already know I'm not in town on the sixteenth.
Were you being in town on the eighteenth?
No, I'll be back on the seventeenth.
Okay, well, the sixteenth will still be our regular scheduled meeting, but what we can do if you're not, if, will you be able to call in?
I'll be at a sporting event.
Okay, um, do you want to get with me and?
Do that.
Bring your comments, concerns about what, just go, I mean, briefly with the plan prior, and then if we recess the eighteenth, you'll be able to then either, I'll have the answers written in, but at the same time, like, that's why we're doing it in two meetings, kind of back-to-back like that where, you know, we don't miss out or anything gets missed.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I've got another question.
Uh.
Is that new to the board? What's the sort of history behind what we're reviewing now? Has the board had input on this in the past or just a first look?
Oh, no.
For this Form Based, for the Heritage District actual regulatory language, the Form Based Code or?
The Form Based Code, yes.
Um.
We've worked on that for.
Yeah, I think the first draft was probably February of last year.
The Form.
It was, it, it was presented in a very different way and we are now going back and making sure that it is all done properly, Ken. So we did look at it last year, it has come to our attention that things were not, all the i's weren't dodged and all the t's were not crossed, and so we're going back and doing our due diligence with a fresh look to ensure that things are on the up and up.
So my intent for, for these.
Well, can I respond?
Yeah.
Um, that, so, so we should be focusing in on the changes or should we be looking at everything from the beginning?
Um, my intent, the, my goal and the way I'm going to kind of, I'm giving you guys the whole document, but I'm going to have a memo and kind of an outline of one, I'm definitely identifying the overall changes in between the last draft and this draft, as well as the things that I do want feedback, that I know that you guys are, want answers slash, um, make sure wants to be addressed. I'll probably highlight those in a different color and if, and that, you know, specifically maybe buffer, if it's uses and all this other stuff, where that's the stuff then, uh, once again, that, that's kind of going to be an item of discussion. The whole document in general can be still an item for discussion, but I'm trying to make sure, I'm, highlight what's changed, highlight also the key points I want everybody to kind of focus on or, or the other that, and if anybody else has been, um, specific stuff that they, they have concerns or questions about, then, um, you know, review that section and then you bring it up in the meeting, but at, at least bring it to my attention prior to the meeting, so.
So you're not envision, you're not envisioning going through the entire document section by section?
Uh, no, my intent to get it to you guys and I'm, I'm going to, I'm giving it an adequate enough meeting time to make sure all those questions of the entire document are answered, but I'm not going to go page by page.
Okay.
That's kind of why I want to get it, get it to you guys a week and a half early to start reviewing. Prior to the meeting, like I said, after, if the commit, if the steering committee reviews it, recommends it, then it's going straight. I, I will have it sent to you guys the next day to start reviewing.
What, what's the steering committee?
You mean the strategic plan.
Yes.
This is the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee, they, they were appointed board to help facilitate this process.
Yeah.
Alright, that sounds like a good idea. No.
So, if everybody's good with the eighteenth, and right now that is our plan, if there's any, uh, board members that have an issue with maybe the eighteenth at six, just let us know prior. Um, but we don't have to call for a special meeting or anything, because the intent will be, we will recess, we'll go from six to eight, eighth or ninth, whatever on that Tuesday night, whatever's needed, we'll set maybe a timeline, but then the intent's sent to recess, where in that week, you guys get, you know, anywhere from, I guess, four to six hours or hopefully not more.
Well, I don't know what else you'll have on the November planning board.
Correct.
But the, the, any sort of applications would be on, be on the sixteenth and the only thing discussed on the eighteenth should be.
Yes, the last agenda item on our, the sixteenth agenda will be the Form Based Code. So, the only other thing that might be on that agenda is kind of what the next topic is, but.
I think you're probably going to have upwards of five, at least five hours between, between those two days to talk about this.
And then, like I said, that's supposed to go through the meat of it, of those, of those changes and the key points. And then if there, once again, other stuff that's called or questions, then I, I'm not necessarily looking for you guys to make a recommendation at those November, November meetings. I want you guys to, I, get through it and get as much feedback and comments back, so then potentially at the December meeting, those will be addressed, kind of then, then make a recommendation and then, you know, if everything's good and and come, and, and every planning board member's comfortable with it, then it goes to council to be adopted in January.
Alright, so it's, you know, of course, it's not scheduled at this moment until we get there and, you know, know that we need the additional time. But, you know, if we need the time, which we probably will, have a consensus that we'll move to that, we'll adjourn to that date.
Well, you recessed to that date, you don't, there will be no motion to adjourn at that time.
We will recess until that date, yes, correct. That's what you're here for, always. Moving on to the next item, potential zoning text amendments. Hunter.
Okay, I'm not going to discuss too long on these. Um, one's kind of a, it's a general information thing, kind of letting you guys know what's in the pipeline, two, um, some of this is kind of, you know, feedback. Uh, there are some potential text amendments that are going to be, uh, needed. Uh, one, the first one being in regards to Marvin, Marvin Gardens conditional zoning. Uh, if you guys recall, the last meeting DRB reviewed the two applications for the, the building, the out parcel two, the additional building four and the sign permit application for that little gateway entrance sign. Uh, all those were recommended for approval, council affirmed it. The one thing on the sign is that, as I discussed in that meeting, is that a potential text amendment to include the sign into the conditional zoning language.
Is that the welcome to Marvin sign?
Yeah. Um, I'm going to follow up with the attorney, but ninety-nine percent sure that that's going to be the case. And that, that should be nice, quick and easy. Essentially, we'll have, I'm going to have Harris Development Group give me an application or, uh, for a text, or conditional zoning text amendment. It would be essentially to allow an additional signage and then we approve the, uh, schematics that were provided to you guys in the DRB thing and then it's in the ordinance and we can, and move forward. The other thing that was brought to my attention was outdoor dining equipment. Uh, I reviewed all of Marvin Gardens' language, I reviewed our language, and we do not discuss anything about outdoor dining equipment. Uh, I will say, per then our last discussion at that meeting, I had the Mexican restaurant, El Tecate, that, um, submit me their outdoor dining kind of site plan. I don't have any type of design standards, they said Publix told them to get my approval and I'm asking them, have they gotten Publix's approval? So, there might need to be some type of just general language kind of put in there to make, you know, to you guys' point that you guys brought up, making sure there's no, I don't know, maybe advertising type umbrella, I mean, stuff that, that's going to make the, the, uh, Marvin Gardens development look not clean and, and nice. But I, from my understanding, Publix overall doesn't want that, um, or they want their development to, I guess, look clean and nice. Um, they don't want the, uh, the mess or that, you know, the cluster of, of the colors clashing and so on. So, um, that might be something that we review as well. With the current applications for the El Tecate, I think that's really the only one that has the L, um, the outdoor dining. Most likely, I'll probably just administratively make sure that, I mean, it's, they're doing four outside tables, making, and, and a black fence around it, four-foot-high fence. Uh, I don't have any information on the umbrellas, I'm going to maybe request that included with the permit, make sure it's maybe just a single color type umbrella. But moving forward, as that Southern Gourmet Restaurant and the other out parcels, the other out parcels get developed that have the outdoor dining, maybe we set some type of general regulation, so that's some. The signage will maybe be on the planning board November agenda, but like I said, that should take less than five minutes. Um, because it's, you guys have already seen the design and the sign, nothing of that's changing, it's just basically adding that into the language. Um, just overall. And then the outdoor dining, like I said, will probably be in the next month or two, I'm not, that's kind of, it's not a huge priority. Um, just because I do know of only that one Mexican restaurant that's already kind of, I think, on, on their pro, way to be an open soon. The second big thing that we, that has been added to, you know, get, get addressed is the updating our zoning ordinance. The second big thing that we, that has been added to, you know, get, get addressed is the updating our zoning ordinance to, uh, have some type of regulations or definitions of small YRS facilities. Our ordinance has regulations for large telecommunications towers. So your typical ninety foot plus type cell tower. However, the way technology's changed, you can drive through Blakeney right here on Ray Road and you see them all the time. They're going to these five G small cell nodes that are, you know, I think anywhere from like thirty to forty feet. Um, can be individual poles, can be co-located on power utility lines and so on. Um, essentially from my understanding of how the technology works, they are just large, like router type things that promote, uh, faster speeds and, and, and better service, uh, compared to a large tower and so on. Uh, with that being said, uh, and, and John, you, you know, you can chime in here. Um, it's, we can't regulate where they go, but we can put, information in there on design standards and promote like co-location. Uh, for example, we have transmission power lines that run here through our main thoroughfares. And I don't think anybody would notice if you put a eight to ten foot additional thing on top of those compared to a standalone, uh, power or a standalone, um, pole of the same height as, uh, what would be on those, beside the power lines.
You have to get an easement from Duke, Duke Energy, right?
Correct. Um.
So you're dealing with a whole nother.
You know, I've got a friend who lives over in Piper Glen. He's on, you know, they've got, I don't know, half a dozen different HOAs within that whole big development. And he's on his particular one. He's also on the, the big board. And he was telling, and I knew that they had gone through these small cell tower conversations. And the bottom line was they spent eighty-five thousand dollars in legal fees. And to, to, in the end, find out that they didn't have a whole lot of say for, say so on it. Because FCC and the state regulates that. And as long as whoever the cell tower operator is, puts it within the existing approved right-of-way.
Correct.
They can do whatever they want. He said, the only thing they came away with is some, abilities, I guess, or some concessions to cover landscaping and screening around them. But he said, in the bottom line, they can do whatever they want. And so.
Yeah, so.
You know, that's, that's the, the, the short version of it.
And that's kind of the issue is the state, basically, you mentioned how crappy cell service is in the, in the area. It's because a lot of municipalities don't like anybody else, doesn't want something like that in their backyard. And so they put in language where they didn't allow or, or made the, cell tower especially is permanent and have these strenuous type regulations and stuff if, if approved, that they didn't get approved and we don't have cell service now for it. So the state changed their legislation on, for small cell and basically, yeah, we don't really have authority to deny it. But we can put regulations in place to regulate design, try to promote co-location, kind of, there's other stuff in there within, our right-of-way, so any type of village in Marvin Road, um, that can kind of maybe hinder that they can't propose, propose it in that right-of-way because of, uh, the proximity to sidewalk and, and, uh, other type of, um, infrastructures of the roads and, and stuff. But with that being said, it's, it, we don't have any language at this point. And so really they can just do whatever. And the only thing that we have safeguarded is once again, if it's a village in Marvin right-of-way, so if it pretty much inside of a residential neighborhood, which we sort of almost got a proposal for, um, all that we have is that encouragement agreement. And as long as they meet that, the standards on that, then we have to approve it. And if it's within DOT right-of-way, DOT, uh, you mentioned like they would have to, if they co-located off the power, they'd have to get approval from DOT and Duke. And for the most part, DOT is probably going to rec, or to, to approve that just because, um, i- if it's kind of near existing, uh, utility, poles or lines or, or within the right-of-way and doesn't create any type of, of safety issue, they really don't have any balance to also deny their encouragement. Duke's the only one that cannot allow maybe them to co-locate off their poles or if it's Union Power, but, um, the goal and intent is honestly to try promoting those co-locations.
You're saying the goal is for us to ask them for co-location?
Yes, because.
Because I can't see, I can't see somebody like Charter Communications wanting to give Duke, any type of residual for using their poles. They'd rather put up their own and maintain themselves, but I can't, I can't speak for them.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. It's like we, that's where in this ordinance being that I'm working on, we can kind of promote that and try making, hey, that's what the applicant has to do first. And if they get denied, well, then here, here's what they have to do. But at least they exhausted, exhausted that option or tried.
Because if, if you look at what's going down Ray Road right now, the ETT put in there and they just look like black.
Yep.
Street poles. They really don't look, or to the discerning eye, but again, that's my discerning eye.
Yeah, the issue that kind of brought this up is that there was kind of a, it wasn't a formal application. It was, Verizon wanted to put one in the center of Tullamore. Like I'm dead serious that it was in the center of Tullamore. Uh, right outside in front, somebody's front yard and it's like, why? And so, you know, that's why we're trying to kind of, it just ties into kind of the way you planned and some discussion that we had. It's like updating and amending our ordinances to meet those goals and policies as well as the changing times. Cause we just don't have that language in place. And so there's a lot of that I want to do, but this just hit the plate first and, uh, we're going to try.
Sure, sure.
Get it addressed as soon as possible. So my goal, the reason that this is on the agenda was one, if I had the time, prior to the meeting, which has kind of been crazy the last few days, is I was maybe going to have some draft language for the small cell. Uh, don't, at the current moment, I've got a bunch, I'm looking at, you know, Charlotte and other places, but I'm also trying to get clarification on what we actually have the authority to do. And luckily Tom, our consultant, did something similar for Grebel, North Carolina, when he was the senior planner there. And so he's helping me with that. And, um, but that will probably, that will most likely be on the November agenda. So, um.
Is there, is there going to get out in front of it and speak to, I mean, if you think about the characters that are in, are part of the world, it's, you know, Verizon or Charter, get with them and, and see what their specifications are and things like that?
I've got them and luckily from my understanding, the, uh, individual I was talking to with at Verizon about this, um, or that kind of, you know, was trying to gather information, um, seems like he's willing to kind of work and, and, you know, be a good, like, you know, of the town, so, or the village. The, uh, so that's the thing is like, we, we're not going to have too mu, like, we can't have too much of this regular, um, regulations because then we don't comply with the state or the FCC opens us up for liability. So it's like, we're trying to create something that, hey, it's promoting this and like, hopefully they see that, that's once again, you know, getting back into the work of it. The intent of this ordinance is that, trying to promote this and they see that and, and follow suit. But, you know, at least we're trying to have some, something on the books compared to nothing, where it's just a wild, wild west up there.
Are there major areas that have already been identified with easements that we could, you know, kind of corral people in?
The simple answer, I mean, not simple answer, the answer is no. And there are existing easements and right-of-ways that we have record of. But I can, I can all day say, hey, have you looked at this location or have you thought about this? But once again, I cannot in whatsoever say, hey, you can't go there. So if somebody applies, so we can have that information, but if they're still trying to apply somewhere, if they're trying to put some, somewhere, somewhere else, I can try to ask like, why here? I mean, I tried to do that with Verizon. So why was this location selected? Like, what, did you think about locating off? The, another thing to do up is, uh, co-locate off, uh, light poles or, or street lights. You'll see them at the, the street lights and they're on the corner there. Um, so, you know, I try to exhaust that, make sure why was this site derived? But for the most part, if they formally submit an application for it to be placed there, there's nothing I can do.
So they could put up a pole in the middle of one of our neighborhoods?
Yep.
But we control the road? Cause don't we control the road?
So it's, okay, yes, but that's where I said, Tullamore is a Marvin maintained roads.
I couldn't remember.
So that's not, so DOT can't say yes then?
I know, but they.
Still within, there, there are right-of-ways even associated with Marvin streets. They're still the, the right-of-way. Basically when we took them over, I guess, we took the DOT right, well, Tullamore would have been new construction.
Yeah.
But, you know, so, so, you know, ten feet outside of the existing paving or whatever it may be is the right-of-way. And they can go anywhere there, you know.
So.
As I understand.
They have, yes, they still have to get that utility encouragement agreement with whatever the regulatory body is, if it's the DOT or the village. However, that's where we can, there's certain things from a legal standpoint, and I'm working with Chaplain and the village attorney on this because like, there's certain things that we can put in that utility encouragement that maybe means that they, there's a set of kind of standards that as long as they comply or, you know, with all that, then once again, you can't not deny it. Um, but that makes it maybe where they might not be able to comply. So like on village maintained roads and which are mainly specifically in residential developments, that kind of hopefully helps the process, but, um, that's something that would be kind of done administratively because it's a policy and agreement. I don't, I don't know if, if those agreements are maybe, I voted on by council. You know, I mean, either way.
I hope.
We're, we're trying to do everything we can. So we're putting something in the zoning and that's another thing that, I'm working with Chaplain and on to maybe figure out a way to do it that way. But if it's in DOT right-of-way, and DOT approves it, then we can have some type of design and stuff that like in the zoning ordinance, but other than that, like we can't say no, that, that, you can't go in that location. And most of these telecommunications providers have already a pre-existing relationship or some type of agreement with, either another utility provider, if it's Duke or Union Power, or if it's with DOT. Yeah.
I, I think it would be great to have a, a visual understanding of what the different types of towers are. Like when I hear, telecommunications tower, I think of those fake, you know, pine trees that you see off four eighty-five. Like what are all the different versions that might try and come in? Um, you know, are there ones that we could, you know, recommend they use? But I don't know like what kind of range they have, you know what I mean? Like I, it's just a whole nother.
So that's, so that's the difference. So in our ordinance now, we have telecommunications towers, which is basically ninety feet above. It's the anything, you think of the pine tree, looking thing that honestly looks a whole lot worse than if it was just a single type pole because it stands out even more. But that's my opinion. Um, all of that is defined by in our ordinance, but as well as at a state and federal level as large scale or telecommunications providing facilities. While the technology's changed, so now they have these small cell things, which is, I think it's pretty much anything under thirty-five or forty feet. Um, that really, there's not much regulation we can do.
It's still above our tree line though, for the most part.
Oh, thirty-five, forty feet wouldn't be.
Mm-hmm, it's. Yeah.
The new neighborhoods.
Well, yeah.
And that's the other thing. I tried to regulate this from maybe if it's, but our building height maximum, I think is thirty-five feet. I think in our ordinance is our building height ma, maximum is thirty-five feet for resident. It's either thirty or thirty-five, even in the residential district. So, I mean, like I said, there's certain things we can try to put in there, but we don't, we have to be careful based off because we, if we're, we get in any time, if we're going against state and federal law, we are opening ourselves up for a huge can of worms that I don't want to be involved in.
Yeah.
Just a waste of money.
Yeah. So like I said, the, the ones that were being proposed are literally the ones that are pretty much right here on Ray Road and going to Blakeney. You, you don't even kind of notice it, but that's also a main thorough, commercial thoroughfare that, I, I don't want, I mean, I get it if they propose something on like Marvin Road, uh, or on Marvin School Road or Newtown or something along that, but not in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And, and, um, I just don't think that makes sense. And I also, it's not fair to those property owners specifically. And, uh, so that's why we're trying to do everything at least to maybe push those, push it, make it as hard as possible for them to locate there. Cause we understand the need, we understand the, um, I mean, yeah, that, that need of, of better quality cell service in this area. But unless, you know, if there's a way that I can make sure they provide documentation on why that location was selected. I, I mean, it, it's certain things like that. I'm like, why? Because they propose, they were proposing, they proposed another one right outside of Tullamore, on Tom Short, which was in DOT right-of-way, which I told them, I said, hey, we're working on zoning information or zoning language right now. But I said, for the most part, if you get DOT approval, there's not much we can do. I mean, I didn't say it like that, but I was just like, you know, and they know that. I mean, that's just the thing. I said, if you get DOT approval, then the village is okay with, you know, the placement of that, that one. But the one I was in Tullamore, you know, I tried to convey, I said, I that, I tried to argue that it was already in violation of certain parts of our ordinance because it kind of is. Now I'm not an attorney and I just kind of threw it out there. Um, as in, I talked to Chaplain sort of about it and, you know, if they did come with an application, I don't know. It's basically kind of, trying to scare them, but it's like, if they had had a formal application, then we'd actually have to see if it would potentially violate, violate that, but.
Maybe, maybe we can, you know, nothing else, control colors, you know, black or dark green or whatever versus galvanized steel kind of things.
Right, if they're going to put it in, in, in the middle of the neighborhood and we don't have any, we can't, we don't have any say so on it. It would need, the design would need to conform with the neighborhood design. So it looks like it's part of it.
And that's the other thing, in Tullamore, about three houses down from where this one was being proposed, there's a light pole. That's roughly probably what fifteen feet. Now, yeah, in height, that's maybe not good enough for the, for the, their technology to really work the best it can. However, I don't, I think Tullamore still would have fought it, but if you think you have a light pole and then you have some maybe fifteen, ten feet, but it's kind of in a designated area that's surrounded for that utility easement. I'm not saying I would love it, but that's a better location than literally in somebody's front yard.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, this one was proposed in the corner of, um, Meta Vista and what's that Amber? What goes in the, what's the road that goes into Amber Meadows from Tullamore?
Rocky Hollow?
Rocky Hollow. The corner of that, there's a house right here. There's sidewalk and it's being proposed right there. House here, house here, house here and house here, like. So, um, so that's, yeah, so that mean, like I said, we're working on it and probably have some, some draft, but if you're interested in it, like I said, go search small cell and I can, I'll provide you guys at the next meeting because I do have some of that stuff from Verizon. I was trying to pull it up, uh, the pole examples, at least for those small cell minutes. But, um, I'm getting more information as it comes, when it comes to what, what reg, regulatory authority we have and, and then, whatever I get from that is what we're going to have an ordinance for.
All right.
Any questions from anybody online?
All right, action item, Austin?
I yield.
You didn't get any, huh?
I don't think we have any specific homework, do we?
I don't think so.
I got a lot of homework.
Oh, you do, but you know, no, nothing assigned at this meeting.
Uh, board comments, I'll start here, Melinda?
Well, yes. So I guess I will just note, not that to go into discussion of any other thing. I've given a lot of thinking and do appreciate everybody's work that's going into the Heritage District. Um, I view this as a chance to revisit thoughts on it, to relook at everything and just for the sake of being transparent with my fellow board members. After now being in this for a year, I feel comfortable and confident in saying that I don't necessarily think that this is something that the people, um, of Marvin wanted based on their response rates. And while we certainly are going to keep going through the process, I just wanted to put that out there so y'all know where I'm, where I'm coming from with my votes going from here on out. So, thank you.
Kelly? No comment. Uh, Michael?
Um, thank you, uh, Austin. And, uh, that was a lot of work you put into this meeting and, uh, Hunter, you as well. It's much appreciated. The history was helpful and, um, I appreciate all the work you've done prior to this and going forward.
All right, uh. Rich?
Uh, I also have to echo Michael's sentiment. Uh, you all have put in tremendous amount of time. We greatly appreciate it. Um, thank you to my fellow board members. I, 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 the nice thing that we can have discourse and certainly talk about these things. And, and certainly you all have been involved with the Marvin Heritage District quite longer than I have. Uh, but certainly this is only the beginning. We can certainly sit down and continue to talk about this. And, and one of the things, and you, you said just a couple of minutes ago, I thought that I read that from the survey that most of our residents were for this. So again, let's continue the conversation and let's do what's best for the village. That's all that.
Uh, Kent? Still there, Kent?
Yeah, um, yeah, hey guys. Um, yeah, nothing, uh, nothing additional for me. Appreciate everybody's. Yeah, um, yeah, hey guys. Um, yeah, nothing, uh, nothing additional for me. Appreciate everybody's hard work.
Uh, Ken?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Bob?
Uh, let, let me.
Do you want to go first?
Let me go first and then we'll go to our, our council liaison. Uh, yeah, I am actually very grateful, everybody. This, this has gone much faster than I expected tonight. So, in that regard, uh, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time. Uh, response to your comment about you didn't think that the, the village residents were all for it and, and the, the resident survey numbers, total numbers were disappointingly low.
Inescuel.
But, but, you know, it has been before, there have been open public comment periods at the council and in front of us and everything. And I don't know that e- either one of, any of us have heard any real negatives for it, so, you know, from the residents. So, you know, yeah, the, the resident survey numbers were low, but.
It's technically scientifically a representative response, if you look at, look at it as statistics.
Yes, statistics, but, you know, anyway.
That's the simplified answer.
Yeah. Uh, our council liaison, Mr. Marklees.
Uh, no, I'm good. I, like yourself, um, everybody, um, especially, um, uh, you know, to the majority of the board here, I, I appreciate the, you know, as I said, sitting on this uh, planning board and watching the sausage making happen. Um, your comments, every single one of your comments are extremely valuable, especially to me because when I then translate to the council, you know, what's the recommendation, where do you think, what direction do you go in? I can say, you know, this is what was discussed. So, I appreciate everybody's hard work and, and commitment to even being on this board. And especially to yourself, Hunter and, and Austin, so.
Thank you. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
At eight twenty-two PM.
Second.
And second by Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.